Good morning, we're gonna call our meeting to order. It is Tuesday, February 6th, and we'll start with our roll call.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Here.
Commissioner Pinter?
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Here.
Commissioner Baca?
Here.
Alright, and let's all join together in the pledge of allegiance. Do we have a motion on the agenda this morning?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second? Great, so we have a motion in the second. This passes unanimously. Alright, we have a fair amount of celebration and proclamations this morning. Thank you all for coming, both for the business but also for the proclamations and celebrations. Starting with our first one, there's a group in Adams County called Maker Housing Partners. They help make it possible for low-income families to have an affordable home. Helping to lead this dedicated team is Brenda Mascherinas, Vice President. She started with Maker at the age of seventeen through her high school internship program, dedicated her career to Maker, and is now one of their vice presidents. I hand it over to Commissioner Henry during the proclamation, and Brenda, Peter, and the Maker team, if you would like to make it down to the podium?
Thank you Chair. Recognition of Brenda Mascherinas. Whereas Brenda Mascherinas is the Vice President of Maker Housing Partners Housing Program, and has recently announced her retirement from her position. Maker Housing Partner is a socially conscious, public housing authority, owner, operator, and developer of multifamily affordable housing based in Adams County. And whereas Brenda began her career with Maker Housing Partners in 1991 at the age of seventeen, God bless you, as a high school graduate through the Adams County Summer Youth Program, providing support as the Section 8 voucher program assistance. Brenda displayed her abilities as a leader which has led to her current position today with the Maker Housing Partners. And whereas Brenda leads a passionate team committed to ending the cycle of generational poverty by providing individuals and families with access to affordable housing and support programs. And whereas Brenda is married to her high school sweetheart, Elle, and they have raised two children and now have six grandchildren, lucky you, all while staying committed to her thirty-three-year career at Maker Housing Partners and the Adams County community. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners would like to recognize Brenda for her leadership in the Adams County community, for her dedication to Maker Housing Partners, committing to addressing the systematic injustice that is the root cause of poverty. Now therefore be it resolved that a Board of Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado proclaim, recognizing Brenda Mascherinas, Eva J. Henry, Charles Chaz Tedesco, Emma Pinter, Steve Odoricio, and Lynn Baca. And Brenda, thank you for your so many services as a, you know, a single mother who is one paycheck away from being homeless. I personally appreciate all those homes that you've found for so many people and so many families and keeping them housed, so thank you so much. Uh, don't you wanna say something? You and Peter? Peter, you too. I never thought I would fall in love with affordable housing. Here I am thirty-three years later. I don't regret a day of it. I do what I do because it's the right thing to do, and hopefully I've taught my team the same thing, so that they can do the right thing. There's so many people here in Adams County and across the state that need affordable housing, and Maker has definitely made a lot of those dreams come true. So, thank you to the entire Board of County Commissioners and to Maker Housing Partners for the opportunity I've had for thirty-three years to serve the community of Adams.
I just wanna say thank you to the Board of County Commissioners and all the county staff who've made today possible. You know, when I think about what embodies a maker, Brenda is what comes to mind. She is fiercely committed, she's a giver, she believes in people, she treats people with dignity, warmth, and grace. She is an icon at Maker. Her history and her legacy will live on, and we are just so excited to be able to continue to serve the community in her honor, in her vision, and be able to, you know, just get as many folks housed and help as many people accomplish their own unique version of the American dream and contribute to the vibrancy and thriving nature of our great county. And so Brenda, thank you so much for your service. It's been a pleasure to work with you for just about a decade now, thank you.
And Brenda, here, here's the proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Our next proclamation is about one of the world's biggest festivals. The Lunar New Year begins with the first new moon of the lunar calendar. I turn it over to Commissioner Baca for any comments and to read the proclamation.
Great, thank you Chair. So good morning. Proclamation this morning is Lunar New Year, February tenth, twenty twenty-four. Whereas each year, the international community observes the Lunar New Year. This year, starting February the tenth, with celebrations taking place around the world for many East and Southeast cultures, including Chinese, Koreans, Vietnamese, and others. And whereas the population of Adams County is approximately four point seven percent Asian. And whereas each year is represented by the yang or yin from form of one of the five elements and one of the twelve animals from the Chinese zodiac. And whereas this year is considered the Yang Wood Dragon because the year's ending digit is an even number, which symbolizes a Yang year, while the rest of the Chinese calendar has entered its first element and fifth zodiac sign, wood and dragon respectively. And whereas people who are born during the year of the Yang Wood Dragon are believed to be ambitious, energetic, and charismatic, often inspiring others with their passion and enthusiasm. They are considered natural leaders, making them magnetic personalities in social and professional circles, according to the Chinese zodiac. And whereas Adams County employee-led A Proud Affinity Group, Asian-American and Pacific Islander, AAPI, connects Asian, Asian-American, and Pacific Islander employees and entrepreneurs to celebrate the diverse cultures and professional backgrounds within our communities. And whereas, countries in Asia have created their own celebrations influenced by the Lunar New Year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado, proclaims February tenth, twenty twenty-four as Lunar New Year, and encourages all residents to honor the rich diversity of the Asian community and celebrate the many ways they contribute to our nation and society. This is signed by all the Commissioners, Eva J. Henry, Charles Chaz Tedesco, our Chair Emma Pinter, Steve Odoricio, and myself. So thank you, thank you Chair.
As was mentioned, we have quite a few celebrations and honorings today. February also marks Black History Month. We get to honor the achievements and pause and learn the history, and learn more about the history of African-Americans, their role in the United States, as well as learning about the Thirteenth Amendment to the Constitution that did a bottle of savory, and events coming up like Juneteenth in the summer when finally all folks were free. There are many examples throughout history such as Jackie Robinson, the first black athlete to play Major League Baseball, Madame C.J. Walker, who was an excellent entrepreneur. There's a new documentary? What is it? It's not a documentary, they did a historical fiction reenactment of the life of C.J. Walker. That's truly excellent if you wanna look it out and talk about her as the first black woman millionaire in America thanks to her hair care products and empowering other entrepreneurs. There are endless stories that have shaped our culture. You can take time to learn some more of them, we have some folks named in our lobby. You can also look at the Smithsonian, which has a number of collections, including the National Museum of African-American History and Culture, and there's a number of items that you can read there and share with friends, as well as books and media. And there's also the National Civil Rights Museum, which curates a list as well. Today I have a proclamation from the entire board, which I will read. Black History Month, February first through March first, twenty twenty-four. Whereas each year, the United States observes Black History Month, also known as African-American History Month, by celebrating the culture, heritage, and countless contributions by blacks and African-Americans, and recognizing their central role in U.S. history. Whereas the most current population of Adams County is approximately four point four percent black or African-American. And whereas Adams County was featured in the Washington Post in twenty twenty-one as one of sixty-four counties in America with the majority of its population identifying as a person of color, and one of only two counties in the state of Colorado. Whereas what began in nineteen twenty-six as Negro History Week under the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History was expanded by President Gerald Ford in nineteen seventy-six to cover the entire month, starting on February one, ending on March one. And whereas this year's theme, African-Americans and the Arts, brings to light the lived experience of African-Americans throughout history, visual and performing arts, and have been crucial in preserving history, community memories, and bolstering empowerment. And whereas Adams County has two employee-led A Proud affinity groups, men of color and women of color, that provide support and create a sense of brotherhood, sisterhood, and belonging from one to another through shared life, work, and personal experience. These affinity groups institute action plans when needed to support a better culture and maintain an environment conducive to diversity in Adams County. And whereas blacks or African-Americans continue their rich history of significant and diverse contributions to the cultural, education, economic, and political vitality of Adams County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams, the State of Colorado, that we proclaim February first through March first, twenty twenty-four as Black History Month, and encourage all residents to honor the rich diversity of the black or African-American community and celebrate the many ways they contribute to society and our nation. And that's signed by all of us. We also have one of our members of our A Proud team, Eric Bratton, who is in our People and Culture Department. Eric, I believe you have some prepared remarks this morning, please come on down.
Yes, yes. Good morning Commissioners, and thank you, and everyone in attendance, thank you as well, and also the folks that may be tuned in, the residents of Adams County that are watching, and our friends. What an exciting, exciting time, this is wonderful. You know, Black History Month is an opportunity to reflect on the innumerable contributions made by black people from Americans' inception to now. From the first time black men, women, and children were carried across the waters of Atlantic Ocean and forced into the barbaric practices of slavery, we have helped shape society through labor, food, spirituality, music, dance, education, and we are innovators who turned the nothing we were given into a glorious something. And that something is woven into the very fabric of this nation. Black History Month is more than the memorialization of civil rights leaders, inventors, trailblazers, and public figures. Black History Month celebrates each and every one of us, and pays tribute to the living history of people who worked, people working to create a better world. This month should inspire every one of us to dismantle systemic and institutionalized barriers to true equity and evoke a stronger sense of unity and commitment to our communities. I'm very proud to be here today, to stand before you all as a man of color, and we celebrate this month in honor of our ancestors who paved the way for me and many others who look like me to achieve their dreams and goals without limitations or restrictions. And for that, we celebrate, and I appreciate your time, thank you very, very much.
In Adams County, we have our own poet laureate as well. She has been very busy at events across the county. About a week ago, there was an open mic, and the list filled up in less than thirty minutes, poets of all ages. For some, this is their first time ever sharing poetry, and that is what Carrie Joy does. We're inviting Carrie Joy, the Adams County Poet Laureate, down to share a performance. She inspires bravery and hope. In honor of Black History Month, she's written a poem and will perform it live for us now. Carrie, please take it away.
Good morning all. Thank you so much for having me. I'm gonna share a very quick, short poem that I wrote and did an installation in collaboration with an artist, a visual artist named John Ray. So actually after the public hearing, if you are, if you have some time, come visit the Taza Gallery, and we have a really cool augmented reality installation that features this particular poem that I would love for you to see. And then I'm also gonna share another one after that, but this one is called Blossomed. Rain only makes me blossom. There are not enough waters to wash my purpose away. I'll only begin to swim, float, ease into my season. This is what happens when my skin is as ancient as black sand, holding secrets that existed before time. No matter the journey, I somehow align, harboring grudges, yes, and bitter memories, churning them into the ground until fragrant, until my spirit remembers to blossom. Thank y'all. So that was, that was my first real cute, quick one. I have another one that's a little bit longer, and it's a little bit more educational, and it's called "I'm Rooting for Everybody Black." I wrote this poem about seven years ago, and I still feel this very much in my heart today. I hope you enjoy. On September seventeen, two thousand and seventeen, in Los Angeles, California, a phrase was said that rang throughout the sound waves of every cellphone, tablet, and computer across the world. It was on this day that my idol, Issa Rae, when approached with the question, "Who were you rooting for at that year's Emmy Awards?", proceeded to answer as such, and I quote, "I'm rooting for everybody black, I really am," end quote. Well, it was in this moment that I felt transported to my youth. The very first time that I truly recognized my blackness, this scarlet letter burned into my flesh as if melanin was a poison that I had no choice but to drink, and the sins of the world saturated my skin because I dang sure didn't ask to be black. But yet, here I am, a little girl looking into the world hoping to find a reflection of herself only, to be met with a glass ceiling on which I saw the souls of the feet of people dancing upon my dreams, dressed in the latest privilege, a brand that many refuse to admit they inherently own. But when black children are suspended because their hair is considered a distraction, the standard is quite clear. And when black-sounding names are met with more suspicion and less distinction than their white counterparts, the standard is quite clear. Our very existence is questioned. We can't have the hair on our own heads, the fullness of our lips, or the thickness of our hips. Well, then again, it becomes a fashion trend when it's inappropriately appropriated, selling melanin thirty dollars for an hour session or five hundred dollars for lip injections. Meanwhile, all our lives, we had to fight for this, to simply be okay, for my right to simply take up space without being of service, of entertainment, or being considered a threat. So listen, I'm rooting for everybody black because I remember that Hattie McDaniel, the very first black woman to win an Oscar, was let into the All-White Award Ceremony only as a favor. I'm rooting for everybody black because I remember that even the forty-fourth Presidents of these United States, Mr. Barack Obama, was still only seen by many as the N-word. I'm rooting for everybody black because I resent the allegation that affirmative action is the root cause of my success when it is simply there to ensure that my magic is acknowledged, my magic, that dynasties before me have poured into my eloquence because as a black woman, speaking black has become something that I do with pride because some of the earliest of languages were birthed in the land from which my ancestors were stolen. So my vocabulary and my intelligence in no way deny my blackness, and my occasional to frequent use of Ebonics in no way denies my intelligence. So listen, I'm rooting for everybody black because I'm sure that eight of the Little Rock Nine that are still alive today would be happy to educate you why we so resiliently created a language of our own as a proper education was always reserved for those that didn't look like me. So I'm rooting for everybody black because as we infiltrate spaces that used to be deemed white only, I am telling you that you've always deserved to be there. You can compete with anybody, so I'm rooting for you to show up. I'm rooting for you to break every glass ceiling and challenge every opposition because when the next generation of little boys and little girls realize that they are black, I want them to realize it with pride, dignity, and hope for their futures. Their lives do not have to be a tragedy. I want them to wear this skin, this scarlet letter, like a badge of honor because listen, black people, we do miracles, we walk on water, held up by the sea of beautiful black bodies that came before us, we raise the dead because living within us is the strength and resilience of our ancestors, so define yourself. You're not the stereotype of your hip-hop culture, you're not a monolith. You are every color of the black rainbow, every tint and every hue is you deserve to be your own. Not a burden to your race to explain away your individuality, but you're beautiful and unique, and I'm rooting for you. I'm rooting for you because you were smart, you was kind, and you was important. I'm rooting for you because you are elegant and you are divine. I'm rooting for you because you are soulful and brilliant, you are loud and boisterous, you are meek and socially awkward, you are creative and you are unparalleled. I'm rooting for you because black bodies like ours are still being sold as chattel today. So I'm rooting for you to emancipate yourself from mental slavery so that we can remove those chains. I am rooting for you, the next Martin Luther King, the next Maya Angelou, the next Lauryn Hill, the next Franz Fano. I'm rooting for you, the next Chadwick Boseman, the next Tessa Thompson, the next Kendrick Lamar, the next Neil deGrasse Tyson. I am rooting for you to be the next you, to be the only you, and to make sure that your world will never forget your name. I said make sure that your world will never forget your name. Thank y'all so much, my name is Carrie Joy. Happy Black History Month.
As is tradition, I would like, our team would like to invite us down to take a picture with our poet laureate, and Eric, who did the proclamation? I'm sorry? Yes, yes, I haven't gotten to the end, thank you. Yeah, so if you received a proclamation today, please come down to the front, and let's take a photo, and I see that Brenda and Peter are still here, so we'll do a couple rounds. Okay, we do have a full day today. Thank you for joining us all in the various proclamations, celebrations, and remembrances. We also have a citizen comment. Do we have any citizens signed up, Clerk?
We do not.
Okay, would anyone like to come down? Okay, elected official communication, Commissioner Henry.
I know, we have a full docket. I have high verbal needs, is what it is.
As long as you own it.
I just want to, I mentioned in the very beginning of the year that I have a year of appreciation, and this morning is a great example, with Brenda celebrating her seventeen years of dedication to the county with Housing Authority, and with Eric and Carrie who endlessly educate all of us. You know, when I retire, I'll be going back into my little white suburban area. And, you know, if it wasn't for this job, if it wasn't for having this privilege of sitting where I'm at, I would have never been exposed to people of different cultures and different colors. And I want to appreciate that moment that I had today to realize how lucky I am to have the position that I am, and I will forever thank the residents of Adams County.
Beautifully said, Commissioner Henry. Anyone else this morning? Okay, do we have a motion on our consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar is presented in the agenda.
Second. Okay, our consent calendar passes unanimously. County Manager.
Good morning, Commissioners. We do have an exciting park improvement project for you today, and Byron Fanning and Cindy Stringham will co-present, I believe, or Cindy. The item is a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Richdale Construction Incorporated in the amount of two million four hundred eight thousand six hundred dollars for construction services for the City View Park renovation project, RFP SPH twenty twenty-three point eight five five.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Stringham, manager of planning, design, and construction for Parks, Open Space, and Cultural Arts. Due to the community needs in the area and unincorporated Adams County, City View Park in the Willby neighborhood is in need of revitalization to provide an updated playground, ADA walking paths, and a pleasant experience for families, as well as servicing the public with high-quality park amenities in line with the Park's open space and Trails' master plan. The topography of the park is challenging, so a cool feature is the hill slide incorporated in the landscape, shown currently in this presentation, which is thirteen feet tall and twenty-two feet long. There's another view. We'll bring that up. Thank you, okay. The design began with concepts in the end of two thousand and twenty-two, with the construction documents being completed in September of two thousand and twenty-three. Both open space grants and a CBPG grant was obtained for this project, so stringent requirements were included in this solicitation for a contractor. After evaluations, it was determined that Richdale Construction was the most responsive bidder and will provide the best value to the county. Therefore, it is recommended to award an agreement with Richdale Construction, Inc. to provide construction services for City View Park project not to exceed the amount of two million four hundred and eight thousand six hundred dollars. Are there any questions? Any questions, colleagues? Just a comment. I'm glad to see this. My children loved these when they were smaller, and we used to travel because there isn't a hill-embedded slide in the regional area. We had to go to another city and county who I will not name. So it's really nice that we have one in Adams County.
Chicago.
What?
Chicago.
Well, yes, that too, but that's not what I was thinking of. We can play guessing games later. Commissioner Odorius, do you have a comment? Or are you making a motion?
No, I'm excited to see this go through, and this neighborhood is, we've heard that the kids want some amenities, and so I'm proud to make the motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion?
I'll make the second chair, and, you know, I traveled to visit my sister in downtown Chicago, and that's where I first saw a hillside slide. It's actually, the slide is part of the hill, but I'm sure there's challenges here in Colorado with so much snow and parks being open all the time. So great amenity, we need it for our community, especially in that area, to have a little refresh and upgrade. So thank you so much for the design and for bringing this forward.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
County Manager, I believe that concludes your business. County Attorney, unfortunately, is very busy today. What do you have for us?
I am. Commissioners, I would ask that we go into executive session on three matters today, two of which are on the agenda and one of which needed to be added. So the first is pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four six, four oh two, four B, for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding the DIA noise litigation.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, move to approve.
Second. Passes unanimously.
All right, the second is pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four six, four oh two, four B, for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding oil and gas enforcement.
Madam Chair, move to approve.
Second. This also passes unanimously?
And then the last would be pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four six, four oh two, four F, for the purpose of discussing a personnel complaint.
Madam Chair, move to approve.
Second. That also passes unanimously? Very efficient, thank you. And we do have one land use hearing. Since we are first real matter of substance today, does staff need a break to set up? Two minutes? Let's take two minutes. Greg, you look ready. You're giving me ready vibes.
I can be ready.
Okay, let's reconvene our meeting, ten oh seven.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Greg Barnes with the Adams County Community and Economic Development Department. This case before you is known as Clear Creek Transit Village Preliminary Development Plan Amendment Number Two. The applicant on this case is Clear Creek Development. They were approved for a preliminary development plan in two thousand and twelve. That preliminary development plan was amended in two thousand and fifteen. Where it sits now is that it's a mix of commercial and high-density residential uses with a maximum number of dwelling units of one thousand one hundred and twenty-five. The application before you is a major amendment to that. The applicant is proposing a reduction in that maximum number allowed from one thousand one hundred and twenty-five to nine hundred and thirty-six. Section two, one ten of the development standards does require a major amendment when it's more than five percent fluctuation. The site is located just on the west side of Federal Boulevard. It's located in between where West Sixty-Fourth Avenue and I seventy-six intersects that boulevard. It's located just to the north and west of the Clear Creek Federal Transit Station. A closer view of what the site looks like is around twenty acres, and it is vacant at the moment. The site was zoned planned unit development back in two thousand and twelve when the original preliminary development plan was approved. This zoning is waiting to be activated based on the approval of a final development plan, which is currently ongoing with staff. The county's comprehensive plan is designated a future land use of mixed use on the site, and this is consistent with the plans that have been approved and are being proposed to be amended as well. So when reviewing an amendment to a preliminary development plan, we want to ensure that the original criteria of approval is still being met. That criteria of approval includes conformance to the long-term plans of the county, so any comprehensive plan or sub-area plan in the area. We're looking for consistency with the county's regulations. We're looking for the development plan to be designed to mitigate effects on nearby property owners. We are looking for consistency with the transportation plan for the county, make sure that there's no negative impacts on traffic, that drainage plans for the area are being adhered to, that the development allows for the county to regulate it to mitigate effects on surrounding property owners, that it's consistent with any approved overall development plan in the area, and that it is compatible to the surrounding area. So as I mentioned, there was an original development plan in two thousand and twelve. This looks much different than what was approved in two thousand and twelve. I don't want to give too much about the current design because there is an active land use case going on for the final development plan, and that will probably be before you sometime earlier this year. But this is a reduction in the maximum number of dwelling units that are proposed for the development. Overall, the development pattern is not being changed. The compatibility to the surrounding area is actually being increased. The current development plan allows for fifty-three dwelling units per acre, and the proposal would drop that down to forty-four, which is closer to what the surrounding area has. It would reduce overall trip generation and would have no change in drainage plans. These would be high-rise apartments that are being reduced. Just a few pictures to show you what the site looks like. So this is looking into the site from Federal. The site is vacant. There's a construction trailer and some storage on the property, but other than that, there's no development at all. The surrounding area, looking north along Federal, you can see a mix of commercial and industrial uses. Looking to the south, just off into the distance, you can see the rail line as well as the I seventy-six overpass. Looking to the southwest into the site, the rail line's at the top of this ridge. And then, looking to the east, there is an industrial warehouse user. During the referral period, we notified our property owners and occupants within a quarter mile of this site. We sent four hundred notices. We didn't get any comments on this specific amendment, and none of the referral agents we contacted had objection to this as well. The Planning Commission heard this case on January eleventh. There was one public comment, but that public comment was related to the ongoing final development plan application. I spoke with the individual who made that comment after the hearing and told them that I would transcribe their comments and include it in the case file for the final development plan. Ultimately, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this request by a seven-to-zero vote. And so the staff recommendation before you is approval of this request with eight findings of fact and one note, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm looking to see if we have any speakers. Commissioner Odoriusio.
Yeah, could you go back to the slide that talked about the changes? Right there. No, sorry. Okay. Okay, so help me understand. You made a comment that sounded a little odd to me, that you don't want to talk about the details here, but that's what we're approving. And so I'm trying to understand the bifurcation between what the decision is today versus the details later. And I don't think, it just is always odd when I hear like, hey, don't pay attention to anything behind the curtain yet, but we'll open that up later. It makes me a little nervous. So help me understand what we're approving today, the impact of today, and how that impacts the case that you said is pending.
Sure. So the original development plan that was, or I guess was amended in two thousand and fifteen, had a specific layout. They're currently pursuing final development plan now. The amendment that's before you is simply to change the text of the two thousand and fifteen amendment to allow for a maximum dwelling unit of nine hundred and thirty-six, but the overall development itself is not being affected by this application. It will be It will be affected at the time that that final development plan comes before you. I suspect it'll be sometime between April and June. And when that hearing comes, it'll talk more about the overall layout of the site and the mix of uses on the property. But this is simply a text amendment to change the maximum number of dwelling units.
So the way I'm interpreting that is, before we go into all the detail, we want to make sure if the bottom line or the parameters behind the change are approved before we start spending all this time, energy, and money going into the detail. Does that sound right?
That's correct.
Makes sense to me. I'm ready for this development to get started. I'm ready for it to be built. And I'm ready for people to be moving in along Federal, bringing in families, bringing in people who can use transit, and bring in some grocery stores and homes that will bring in some of the other amenities. So I, at this point, support it. I may have a question for the developer, but I'm sure they're coming up next.
Excellent, I don't see anyone else signed up with questions. Applicant, do you have any comments? We might have some questions for you as well. Please come down and introduce yourself.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Bill Maher with Norris Designs. Pleasure to be here today. And I'm joined by my client, Brian Beiler, with Pacific North Enterprises. But before I begin, I would just like to say this morning's event was such a wonderful opportunity to be here and participate in the celebration. So thank you for that. But first of all, before I get too far into my presentation, I'd like to thank the staff. We've been working on this project, as you know, for quite a while. And we appreciate their coordination and assistance throughout this project and to get us to this point. We are excited about this project and how it fulfills the goals of the county to support your TOD plans. They've been in place, you know, over ten years for this area, for Federal Boulevard, and how we're also accessing and interfacing with the Clear Creek Trail. We feel all those things are very important and providing this new catalytic development here to take advantage and build on your investment with transit directly across the street. As Mr. Barnes indicated, this application is just simply for consistency and transparency. So the PDP maximum density and heights match, which we will bring forth to you at a later date with the final development plan. Just so it's very clear to staff and also to the public, we're all about transparency with this project so they understand what the maximum density is in the zoning. And so the final development plan will meet that and so both documents will talk together in a very thoughtful and easy way to understand. And that is all I have at this point.
Thank you, sir. I see Commissioner Odoricio has a hand up.
Yes, last time we had a lot of changes in a big planned unit development. It was the Midtown. And over time, the developer there kind of whittled down all of their commercial and other amenities that people were really looking forward to and which made it so appealing to so many folks around the community as well as those moving in. Are you planning on reducing some of those commercial goals to have commercial amenities for the folks living here and elsewhere?
Oh, absolutely not. We are planning to provide a mixed-use development. I'll go to a graphic here. So on the east side of the project, this is Federal Boulevard here, is really the heart of this development where the mixed-use buildings that will be residential and commercial. And you will see more of this as we come forward with the final development plan. And then townhomes within this area. And ultimately, the final development plan will go into more detail of the parks and open spaces. And we're exceeding, as you'll see when we come back for the other hearing, how we're exceeding the park and open space requirements that the PDP requires. We're going above and beyond that. And we're ensuring that the public realm is very walkable and it meets the integrity and the principles of a TOD development. And so we're taking that all into account to provide a place that we'll all be proud of and is that kind of live-work opportunity that people can go to a coffee shop in their neighborhood and easily walk to the transit station. And also access to your wonderful regional trail network. And so we have this site here and we're really being mindful. That's why we're taking our time of working with the neighborhood, being transparent, to incorporate all the elements and meeting, ensuring that we're also complying with the overall PDP, which is the overriding zoning document for the project. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you very much.
Okay, I don't see any other hands up. I do have a question. I see your design plan. In my recollection and understanding, the train station is just right across Federal Boulevard. Given the immediate vicinity of a train station, I really don't understand why you're reducing your maximum units allowable. Of the places that we're trying to encourage units, this appears to be it. Why would you make this choice and limit yourself?
Sure. Well, we still have a very high density of our approximately forty-four dwelling units per acre, upwards of nine hundred and thirty-six units in here. And the original PDP that was set forth by another property owner developer at the time that we inherited had it capped at 1,125. But through our intensive analysis and site planning, we realized this fit is better to meet your concerns, Commissioner, about open space and parks and respecting the flood plain and all of those things. So we brought it down to really right-fit the development. And we're still meeting that TOD density that is applicable for this area. But we feel this is the best-case scenario.
Okay, are, just one more time, are you sure? Because it feels like folks are frequently coming to us and asking about density. And you here are proactively limiting it when you're beachfront to a state highway, Federal Boulevard, as well as a train station.
Well, yes, we are very sure in the layout and the density. We have seven-story buildings along Federal Boulevard. And we wanted to provide a mix of housing types as well, multiple-family and townhomes that provide that owner-occupied, more attainable housing choice. And with that, this is the density that worked best to provide those park spaces as well and meet all of the requirements. The 1,125 was, quite frankly, just a little bit tight to make it all work as well as we want and you want to meet your regulations. And all of the easements that are required for Crestview and the other agencies, this is our best attempt and most proud effort to put together, I think, in a very thoughtful way. That still provides a density that is similar. We did a density study of looking at other TODs within the metro area. And this is pretty consistent of what you see. Some of them are much less than this, as well, down in the tech center in particular.
Okay, thank you, those are my questions. I don't see anything else from my colleagues, so thank you. We'll see if we have any comments from the public and then we'll take a vote.
Great, thank you.
Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to comment?
We do not.
I don't see any members of the public, but if someone is here and I haven't spotted you and you'd like to speak, this is your moment. Okay, that brings it back to the board for comments, additional questions, or a vote.
Madam Chair, unless there's other discussion, I move for approval of the subject request, which is the PUD 2022-00020 with eight findings of fact and one note. Oh my gosh, PUD 2023-00020 with eight findings of fact and one note. Thank you, sir.
Oh, Eva, stop.
Eva can't sit with us.
I'll second that. And then I just want to make a couple of comments. So I wasn't a part of the commission in the 2012. And I appreciate, okay, I appreciate the comment on density. I did see at the bottom of one of the slides that it was building height was modified. That wasn't the exact term for future building land or for future land use. So I'm okay with the density as it is. I know we want to maximize these areas of density along TODs. Federal Boulevard is up and coming. And so if it's a matter of keeping commercial retail space, having it placemaking, we have that space on-site in lieu of some of the housing and amenities that these residents will have. And actually, it potentially has further reach than just this development of people coming on-site and enjoying a cup of coffee or, you know, having a drink at a bar, whatever retail or commercial space would attract there. I'm really interested in, and I think what's exciting to me is really the parks and open space that will come to the site and the interaction with the Clear Creek Trail. Federal Boulevard, it's been several months, but CDOT did a kickoff on their Bus Rapid Transit. And Federal Boulevard was one of the Bus Rapid Transit priorities for CDOT. And they're going after some federal funding. So it's very, with CDOT's backing, the federal government's dollars, that Federal Boulevard will be transformed. It's one of our highest, especially here in Adams County. It's one of our highest-traveled corridors for workers and commuters along Federal Boulevard. So it traverses the entire length of the county, just about. Goes from Westminster outside the county and we, our neighbors right up to the county line with Denver. So excited for this and thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you both for the motion and the second, let's vote. All right, that passes unanimously. Congratulations. It's my understanding that is the last item on our agenda. That concludes our meeting. We'll see you upstairs for our study session.